Welcome to this special town council work session. April 28th, 2025. We've already had the roll call and meetings now called to order. Have the pledge allegiance and Carol, would you lead us? Thank you. Okay, tonight has only one agenda item. There will be no action tonight and you're going to hear a lot about water. We just concluded an executive session on some of the contract issues. The agenda item is the staff recommend that council provide comments and direction on the strategic water resource planning that has occurred since the adoption of the integrated utility master plan in November of 2024. With that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. So we have a presentation that we're going to be putting it on the screen. We can have that come up. Um, we have a number of people here that are augmenting staff. We have our water policy advisor, water attorney, Michelle Van Botham, Botham, and also are another outside water policy strategist Brad Hill, who has quite a bit of municipal background. And then, of course, Sean, our utilities director. And I'll turn it over to our utilities director, Mr. Cruz Weisner.
Thank you, Grady. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and also members of the public. What you're seeing handed around, I'll just explain to people. In some of the slides, you'll see some graphics. We actually made hard copies. So there's some on the table on the side there. Some of the graphics, if you like, I think there's 20 copies of them. And then there's also a double sided sort of summary sheet of what we were working on as far as water policy and pros and cons. I'll just hang on for a second while people grab those. Yeah. So we gave counsel the full 11 by 17s just because it's a little easier to look at that way. Again, you'll see these in the presentation, except for the summary table, which is basically the gist of the presentation we're going to give tonight.
Sean, do you plan to give an overview of what's behind all this with Colorado River CAP? Yes, okay, good. For those in the room that don't live and breathe this every day.
Yeah, obviously, water resources is a big issue and topic for the town to consider. So our goal tonight is just to explain, since, you know, during the master planning process, we actually held a workshop in 2023 where we discussed the water resources. Some of this is repetitive from that presentation. And then again, we repeated it in November when we actually adopted the master plan. So since that, we've been working on strategies. We identified a problem, which was the town's water resources are at a point that we're limited as we move forward to. We refer to it as post 2026 or 2027 is when we expect cuts to happen in the Colorado River. The town's water resources are very tied to our Colorado River water allocation so that we are directly impacted by that. So we're going to walk you through a bit of a history and then what we've been doing to hopefully address that. And there's multiple layers to this. It's not just one solution. So with that, again, just a quick background, we did adopt the master plan this November. We did a workshop in 23 to explain the water resource component of that master plan. And we really looked at tonight, we're going to talk about the water resources portfolio that the town has. Looking at growth projections, because one of the things when you look at your water portfolio, you want to look at what you're going to need in the future. It's not just, you know, in our case, it's actually we're looking at the potential cuts or potential shortages on the existing customer base, let alone for future growth. And the town really leads to be looking at developing redundant water supplies. What I mean by that, that means that we are so much tied to the Colorado River water supplies right now. It puts us at risk because we have one large supply. So that's what we're going to go through tonight and stop us and ask any questions you have. Brad, do you want to start with this?
Welcome, Brett.
I'll pass it off to Brad Hill. Brad Hill's a water resource consultant and actually ex former director from Flagstaff. So he has a lot of knowledge about water resources in the state and just it's great to have him aboard as part of our team here.
Thank you, Sean, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure again to speak before you. So what we thought is the mayor asked was a little bit of a background. So I'm going to go through the next handful of slides here. The first one is a picture on the left of the upper and lower basin known as that is the Colorado River Basin. As you've all been hearing in the news, the supplies have been overly over allocated and I'll describe what I mean by that. There's been a drought ongoing, as we've all heard for the last several decades. And the agreements between the seven states, which is there are seven states that make up the upper and lower. And then there's the agreements between the lower basin. And I won't go into those, but they're important in the conversation. Is it all seven states or is it the three lower basin states? I'll refer to both of those. And then in 27, so those agreements all expire in a year. So in our business, a year's not far away. For candidly, a year is like tomorrow for us. And so we are doing what we can to respond to to these upcoming rule changes. And then what is known as in 2027, or we'll use the term post 2026, water supplies get reduced, or we're anticipating that those water supplies get reduced, meaning Central Arizona Project water supplies, which are withdrawn from the Lake Havasu and through the Central Arizona Project Canal, or also refer to CAP. If I use too many acronyms and I apologize, let me know. I'll try not to. I'll try to speak them all out, but sometimes we just kind of slip into that. Want to go to the next slide? So here's kind of what's happening. Sean and I met with Central Arizona Project staff on several different occasions, but most recently the last couple of weeks. CAP, as we have, as I mentioned before, is anticipating shortage cuts. And and that's due to the lower basin has put together an alternative proposal to the seven states on what to do post 2026. Those conversations are held up much higher at the highest levels of the water folks in the state, meaning within Central Arizona Project, the Department of Water Resources, the Governor's Office, et cetera. So there's a little, there's not a lot of information out there of how those conversations are going. Another impact is with the change in the federal administration, the Bureau Reclamation that is the master of the seven states of the Colorado River. They don't have a what's known as a commissioner. That's the person that runs the Bureau and is the the how the operations and things work within the Bureau and the Colorado River. So those are kind of some of the things that are ongoing right now that why when we were slightly effusive or slightly, we're not quite sure how things are going to land in terms of the conversations, that's the reason why. So the first bullet here is their Central Arizona Project and our conversations with them are talking about a 1.5 million acre feet reduction within the lower three states and Mexico. That is what's known as the structural deficit in terms of if you hear or read about what that means. This, so Central Arizona Project said that's what we should be planning for. And if that were to occur, and and Arizona would get the majority of that cut based on priority. Central Arizona Project within the state of Arizona has a low priority water supply, of which that's the water we're talking about here, what's the town gets. Additionally, if the hydrology continues to kind of the last 20 years is like what the next 20 years will be. So the last 20 years, two decades worth of growth with a drought, if there's going to be continuing drought in the future, then probably additional shortages will occur beyond what we're just discussing here. With that 1.5 million acre feet reduction, the state of Arizona is going to take a $760,000, 60,000 acre feet, sorry about that, reduction over the norm, which means it's about a 20% M and I reduction to the town's M and I supply. So what you're going to see in the following slides from this one is I with John and I and talking with Central Arizona Project, we elected to use 25%. We thought that was a little more conservative for you. So while the state is looking right now in the near term at 20%, we're going to use 25% for this conversation here tonight. And lastly, it's very, very important that we note, and I've said it earlier, but there if there are shortages greater than the 1.5 million that's already been agreed upon in the lower states, meaning the seven states, no one has agreed to anything. Just make it candidly clear above the 1.5, what it looks like at the seven state level, no one's approved, no one's agreed to anything. And that's kind of the challenge of us having this conversation and then planning for you on how to mitigate those impacts. So what that means to you is you have current supplies are roughly 2,800 acre feet. Here's the breakdown of the different types of supplies. Couple of them are Central Arizona Project. M and I, which is municipal industrial, it's a priority type of supply. And then you have some groundwater, mostly at Desert Hills, but we'll talk about the Cave Creek groundwater in the presentation a little later. So as I mentioned before, there's anticipating in the year January of 2027 that the federal government's going to declare a shortage. We think it's going to be, or Central Arizona Project thinks it's going to be 20%. We're proposing 25% to plan for. And what that does is that reduces your water supply of the CAP portion of your water supply. And what that means is that could be come in two years, you'll have a water supply of less than 2,000 acre feet a year. What does, what does that mean to you? Those numbers might not mean anything to you. So you currently deliver roughly 2,300 acre feet of water supply. So you're instantly in a shortage. You and the and the water that you deliver to your customers will be instantly in, you won't have enough, Sean won't have enough water for you to deliver all of the water needs of your community. That's what those numbers mean. And I'll get, I'll describe a little more. Because what we also don't want to do is provide you a problem without a solution or two. So.
It's been that we had, this is what came out of the master plan. This is what we've been thinking about diligently for the last couple of years. So we have a big problem. We don't know the scope of that problem because as Brad's indicated, the the cuts have not been determined. We anticipate there will be cuts, you know, we'd be very short sighted for us not to think there's going to be cuts. It's just, again, all our conversations have shown that 20% is a good number. We decide to go to 25% and that's assuming we lose all of the non-Indian agricultural water, which is water that we did secure for Desert Hills a few years ago, and that's going to go to zero. We'd only ever get that back on a good wet winter year that we'd get some of that coming back at as occasionally. But with that, we're going to walk through some graphics. So the large 11 by 17s you have in front of us, the charts we'll actually have on the slides and to those who pick them up, that's what we're going to walk through, which helps explain this graphically, what we think for the next 20 years, what this impact could be. And then we'll go into what we believe are solutions. And actually, the graphics will show those solutions and we'll verbally repeat that again at the end.
The question, and counsel asked questions as we go along here, but the question is, we also have some water that we're contracted for, we have obligations for. Does this just on this page here, I know it's probably on some of the graphs, but does the 2,000 acre feet, we're delivering 2,300 now, but some of that's going into storage. So that's an additional amount that is that we're short. We can't, those contracted amounts?
No, the 2,300 is actually our CAP and our Desert Hills water deliveries to customers on top of that's to meet existing customer demand. So there is growth. We've mentioned it before that the town has some some neighborhoods that have certificates of assured water supplies. So that's an add on on top of this. And we've actually looked at existing neighborhoods in the town. When we did the master plan, we did a very detailed study of this. There's several existing neighborhoods that were plotted prior to 1980, when the Groundwater Management Act then required certificates. So we sort of accounted for those. We have them broken out separately in the master plan, but we're talking about 2,300 acre feet is the current deliveries to customers.
Does that include Kahava Springs?
And Rancho Minas. No, not Kahava Springs.
Certified water and we've been using it for a while.
Yeah. So again, if there is a certificate that has not been obligated or not currently getting demands, we sort of are not counting for that. So there is part of discussion is the growth in the system. And then what priority is that growth level? Is it a certificate?
How many additional acre feet would Kahava Springs require that we're obligated to?
I think it's actually 127, I believe, or something like that. And then there's
On top of the 2821 or is it on top of the 2228?
I know 2821 is the water supply, the water portfolio. So that's on top of the 2,300 deliveries that we're doing right now because Kahava has not gotten any deliveries from us.
So roughly 2,500 acre feet is where we need to be.
Well, with Kahava, and then if you look at the other certificates, because I think there's a total of five certified subdivisions that could be developed. Again, I don't have those numbers from us. We had that in the master plan. So and that shows up in some of the charts.
So what, what's the total that we, if all these things were built? What is the total we need to provide?
So I think that number is we'd be short, assuming a 25% cut in the town's cap municipal industrial supplies and a zero availability of the NIA water. I think it's 800 acre feet short for deliveries that I think.
And we can provide counsel that number. It's in the the black of each master plan that was presented to you back in the fall, those exact numbers. We just don't remember them off the top of our head.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because that'll make a difference in how much, how much water we have to procure. I mean, it'll make quite a bit of difference.
Mayor, Councilmember Rhodes, yes, and the next slides will illustrate that for you and for everybody.
Good discussion. Thank you. Hopefully the next slides do help build upon that. But yeah, the master plan, we outlined that the certificated areas, the neighborhoods that don't have certificates, but we are sort of assumed had a higher right. And then there's the existing infill development. So we sort of mapped all that out.
Now, let me ask another question. The 2821 and does that include the areas south of Carefree Highway? Or are they on Phoenix water and it's their problem?
Yeah, South of Carefree Highway, American Council will be converted by the end of this calendar year is our understanding would be converted to City.
What does that lower our number to?
The, right now, because it's only really the Walmart Burger King and the little strip center actually on our water supplies, everything west of Cave Creek Road is actually already have a City of Phoenix domestic meter. There's getting fire protection from us. I think it's about 18 acre feet that that Walmart and other areas are using. So we get about 18 acre feet back at the end of the year when Phoenix completes their improvement.
Thank you.
If I could spend just a little bit of time on this slide, and then the other ones will just step through because they all look identical with with information popping up. So let me just spend a few minutes here. So what you have on this slide is a bar chart on the upper right with colors of vertical bars. Those vertical bars represent the types of water supply that the town has. The blue in general is Central Arizona Project water, et cetera. You can see the the different types that we just discussed on the prior slide. That bar chart also has two colored lines, a green one at the top and a yellow one. The significance of those is what Councilmember Rhodes was just asking, and that is the yellow horizontal one is what if we just, what if the town had no growth from today forward? So only existing customers, would the town still experience a shortage or not? So that's the purpose of the yellow bar and that the yellow underneath shows in this example that you would have a shortage. That's the, if you notice that I put a, an arrow to it. The red above is the growth portion. And then this example is the shortage what would occur. And that growth is what is what Sean was just meaning. We anticipated it to be the the certificates, et cetera. And then to answer your question, Councilmember Rhodes, the bottom right of the, oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be the next graph. There's a number there that's going to answer your question. What's the total volume? At least in the year 2040. So horizontally, let me, let me figure out the horizontal. So the top one above the blue line, it says water supply shortages. That's where your eyes are going to draw to. I put some red graphics around it to draw your eyes. I would recommend, I'll get that in just a minute. The next slide is the new types of water supplies. As I mentioned, we don't want to come to you with a problem without some solution. And so that's what these are going to illustrate is what some options that council can consider as we move forward. And then the next bar, excuse me, the next horizontal line is your existing supplies. And then the very bottom is what are those demands and their projections? And the growth shows that sorry, I couldn't read that far. 3% growth is what that green line illustrates. So with that, as long as there's no questions, I'll step to the one because there's going to be a lot of numbers. And my recommendation is to not specifically drill down to a single number and say it's 101. If I had my druthers, I could have figured out with with Excel on how to round, but Excel doesn't let you round easily. So it's got all the detailed numbers, but I just be aware of these. So if you
get your step. Yeah. And just pause for a real quick second. So the 3% growth rate was actually what we adopted in the master plans. We're continuing this to match the master plan. And that was actually done in 20, we started last plan at the end of 22, but it's really 23 that we looked at was the basically the horizon at the time of what we thought was going to come in. And we sort of geographically placed it in the system. And it was really properties within that we'd be tying on to the existing distribution systems where that number came from. But that's going back to our master planning documents. We thought it would be best to tie that back to the master plan. That's something as we move forward, we could refine better to figure out what that growth could potentially be.
So why does the shortage at the no growth decrease over time?
Because of various supplies on the existing supplies and the way they get moved. So let me, let me step through these and I'll help, it'll help. So what this illustrates is our conversation with Central Arizona Project, what were to happen if it's 25% reduction come 2027? As I mentioned before, your town would have a challenge providing water supply to existing color customers. That is illustrated by the 199. That's, these are in acre feet per year numbers. And then the one above it is the shortage in a growth for the, in a growth that were to occur, the estimated growth that Sean just mentioned. The sum of those two is the total, is the total, but it's important for you to see at least existing customers. And then at the very bottom, what that illustrates is we've worked through the various types of water supplies. And we have highlighted in purple your non-Indian agricultural water supplies projected to go to zero actually next calendar year. And then the M and I supplies, your municipal industrial supplies are projected to be dropped 20 to 25%, whatever that exact number is. In this case, it's 25% starting in 2027. And then you could just do the math on how, on how that works. So the the shortages of existing customers, it has to do with how the town is project, how Sean is projected to utilize the different water supplies that we have and how efficient Rancho Minas can be and how efficient their treatment plant can be. So some of these have some of that baked into the numbers already efficiency. So that's the answer to your question, why there's some some changes to the existing customer shortage and not a flat line. So with that in mind, I'm going to step through these, but it's important to note, if you were to experience what this shows, if you were to experience a 25% short in in M and I, you're going to see a shortage all the way out. We just took it out to 2040 as an FYI. So now we're going to step through some options of what the council can consider, what I've been working with Sean and Michelle and and his staff on what we can do moving forward. So water conservation is always at everyone's top of their mind. If you'll notice, I didn't put any numbers. And I know or I think there's a desire to have some kind of percent number, but I wanted to illustrate, I didn't put that in here. We can add that as we go forward, but I wanted the conversation to occur first. So that's first and foremost is manage the water supplies you have today more efficiently, water conservation. And then that would reduce some of the shortage numbers that you see. The next one is what we're calling Phoenix Aquifer Storage and Recovery Wells. Sean and I have met with City, Phoenix City staff. And they have the ability to help out the town by recharging some of your CAP M and I water right adjacent to you. And then the, then the town has the ability or they have the ability to pull it back out and deliver you. So and I think Sean's going to go a little more over in detail, but just that option alone begins to buy you time for at least two years of existing customers. And depending on the growth, so just that alone buys you from 27 to 29. That's, that's very, very important. So step through the next one. Sean is looking at redoing some of the wells that have been mothballed over time in the town. We are projecting that as a short term option. So that 160 acre feet represents about 100 gallons a minute. And Sean thinks he should be able to get that. I know you're going to present more about it now. I'm going to talk about how much water he thinks he can get out of it. But we only used it here as a four year option. Because with, you'll get whatever you can, whether it's that much water or not, but it's not something the town should should rely on long term. It's not a sustainable water supply, just given the hydrogeology of this area. So the next one, you skip two, you go back one. And then, oh, okay. So then the next one.
We're on slide five.
We are on, should be six.
Yeah, we jumped one. We don't have it in the slide deck. You go from Wells to this one.
We do because you took it out because you didn't want, you didn't want to have that. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So what this illustrates is the first one of those two, and I apologize for that, is the what's known as the Phoenix reclaim water exchange. You were on slide six. Or I am on. Yes. Yes. So scenario four. Sorry, we should have, all the scenarios should be in here. We're on scenario four. So what this is, this is a long-term storage recovery LTSC, which is known as Long Term Storage Credit Recovery and Arizona Water Bank, and they're lumped into two, two, one option, but it has two impacts. I keep them separate. One is the reclaimed water. So there's an option to work that we have been working with Phoenix staff on for you to send reclaimed water to them in exchange for them to give you back a blended source of CAP and advanced water treatment. There's a, there's some physical infrastructure that needs to happen and stuff, and Sean will describe that. But that is one of the two lines that that illustrates. That's the 56.
And that's our, every time I come to council and the Corryman meetings, I talked about that's the overflow water of the Rancho Minas Lake. So that's us getting a connection to the City of Phoenix to allow us when their lakes are full, not to overflow their lakes, but to send that water to Phoenix. That was our goal with that, that number. That's where that came from.
And then the the second one on there, which is the Arizona Water Banking Credits. Of the, first of all, the reclaimed exchange with Phoenix is an ongoing. So that's a supply that's ongoing. So that's a benefit. And and it's a water conservation option too. The other element is the Water Banking Credits. So the state of Arizona, since the mid 90s, has been recharging what then was called excess Colorado River water at various recharge projects within Arizona. They've been doing it for 20 plus years and they created statutorily what is known as the Arizona Water Bank, which is essentially a subset of the Department of Water Resources, but it's, it's, excuse me, controlled separately through a board. They have a lot of credits that they have been recharging on behalf of all municipal, well, municipal and industrial and Indian customers and tribal, tribal partners. So what we are projecting here, another element to the confusing part of this conversation is the water bank hasn't decided how they're going to give away their credits. Just to be candid, that's another element. They have to do it. They have a way to do it through post, through 2026. But that agreement also ends in 2026. So not only is the discussions within the seven basin states up in the air, the conversations within the state on how the water bank needs to distribute its credits is also up for discussion. I know you have sent a letter to the board on that, and I know you've talked to others in the state high up on that issue. But what they have agreed to, I've just put here, what if they just continue to what they agreed to? And that is to backfill 20% of your municipal and industrial water for a period of time. I'm picking five years. That is significant to this community because, yeah, thank you. Yeah. Because as you could see on this graph, what it does is it buys you even more time, probably five, six years. Buys you out to 20, you know, Buys you out to twenty, you know, again, I hate to give you exact dates, but these are generalized dates. I think that's important. That's why I put this as draft and not final. But it's going to buy you five, six, seven years of time, which is huge. I mean, that's that that that's a big deal. So understanding and and we are, we're all paying attention to what the water bank is doing. How they distribute those credits and then what staff and myself collaborating with your staff are doing. Then should they do that? What are the administrative things we have to have in place, the agreements, the permits, et cetera? So that's a big uh water supply for you.
Brad, a question on that one, please.
Yes.
Uh, for the Arizona Water Bank credits, is that already paid for? Do we do we pay a new price for for the opportunity to use those credits?
Mayor Councilmember Driscoll, um, we were just having that conversation. So the the state of Arizona taxed everybody in the three counties to pay for the putting the water in the ground. I'm not sure what the cost is going to be to pull the you'll have an infrastructure cost to pull the water out of the ground. Whatever that looks like, we're not sure if the state is going to have another surcharge onto those credits. I do not know that answer and it's just not known enough yet, but you you clearly will have a a a physical infrastructure cost associated with pulling those out. That's my take at this moment.
And our best knowledge right now with the Arizona Water Banking Authority is that while they've been banking the water and generating the storage credits, they're not. From what we're seeing right now, we don't expect them to move forward with a withdrawal option. So they're basically going to give it to the different members and ask them to deal with getting that water out of the ground and putting it wet water in the pipe. I can't put paper water in a pipe, but you know, but that's so that's the next challenge that we'll have to overcome. But it is physically available to us and legally available to or legally available to us. Just how do we get physical access to that into some of the challenges?
So there's one more. And that is a future water supply. I know this council authorized the town to be involved in the Verdi River. Um, part of the dam modified, so that could be a future water. I just kind of left it a little amorphous. Uh, but if you were to get a future water supply and how you would layer that in and how that would impact and or push out. The need for uh or or the impacts of a potential shortage of your C A P supplies. So with that, I've given you kind of some ideas and solutions. I'm going to turn it back over to Sean and he'll talk more details.
Sean, one other question before you start there. For the existing water supplies where Desert Hills groundwater is is. Charted out consistently at two hundred and thirty acre feet. Uh, and that's through the the life of this through twenty forty. Is that realistic that that's going to be a consistent number?
Mayor Councilmember, um, that's a little conservative. We did put some projects into the ten year capital program. So we funded the first five years of that. To look at re drilling a couple of the casings out there to try and keep it up. So that's that's a conservative estimate. We actually also put there might be a potential to drill some new wells to to keep that water supply level. I don't think it'll grow and that's what we sort of got out of the Clear Creek study that we did in twenty twenty, which allowed us to do the twenty twenty one water resource policy, which which limited new connections out there. It's not a very sustainable aquifer. But we we think through this timing period that we could probably keep this wells running. So that's our hope right now. So again, it 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 doesn't paint a very good picture, but there's, you know, as Brad said, there we've trying to layer solutions together. So I'm just going to go through the more the higher level solutions and sort of lumping together. We we have broken into short terms and midterm. Short term is water conservation. How can we work with our customers to extend our current water resources so people use less water? That's an opportunity for us.
Just break in here for a second and and talk to we have a lot of people in the room here. Uh, we've met with the governor's office, Department of Water Resources, sent letters, Bureau of Reclamation. C A P, you name it. We've been to see him and sent letters. And at every level there is, there is no certainty. There's no. There have all these things out there, but none of the agencies are ready. We don't know how much water we're going to lose, if any. Uh, we will lose some and it's what year and a half away. Uh, Department of Water Resources, the water banking has no rules to take water out. It is like driving a hundred miles an hour towards a brick wall at night. And and you can't see it. So so we we've uh spent an incredible amount of time and resources. Making sure we understand everything, having options required, you know, gotten this this these things done here. But it's going to take clarity from our leaders. We have no commissioner of the Bureau of Reclamation, the very agency that controls the whole thing. Now, um, when they had one, they didn't do it. They didn't do anything to help us. So it's we may as well not had one frankly. So uh, there's going to be a lot of uncertainty in the future. But we are doing everything that we can with what we can do and planning on getting additional resources. And that's what what this meeting is is really about. So you're not going to come out of here with a lot of certainty, but one thing you should come out here with is we have a lot of really smart people. Working on this problem. And we won't, it won't be next week, it won't be next month. It may not be next year. Twenty seven, maybe, well, it has to be next year sometime, I guess. But uh, so that's why you're seeing all these graphs and scenarios and and meetings. And of course, this is all going to have the effect where it always does on the bills that our water customers pay. So uh, I don't think there's any way we can say that there's not going to be substantial increases. Every city in town in the system is doing that same thing. So we're going to have that happen. The water is going to increase and the water cost is going to increase. I'm a water customer myself. So um, there isn't a lot of good news in this and there is a ton of uncertainty still. And I think you're going to see here in Sean's next presentation that some of the work that has been done that around the edges. Uh, to take care of some of these problems, but I think the community and that's why we're having this meeting is the community also gets updated on what's going on. Even though we don't have any final answers at this point.
Um, I've asked Brian, who's sitting in the back, our I T guy, to pull up our water master plan. So we can answer.
Oh, sorry. Brian has pulled up our water master plan so we could answer questions directly as Mr. Rhodes, Councilman Rhodes asked. Uh, so if we ever want to get to that point, maybe towards the end of this, don't mean to, um, you know, call you off guard, but those are the facts. And we should have the facts before us and then we can answer them when the questions are asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for those those comments. So again, I'm just going to this first, these next two slides are really just a summary. So the short term issues, when we think short term, we're thinking before twenty twenty seven. Um, at this point, you know, we're talking about, and I'll get into more details of each one of these items, water conservation. Um, investigating restarting the existing wells. Uh, the Cave Creek Water System did start on groundwater wells and then converted to surface water, Colorado River Supplies in nineteen ninety. So can we go back and and can that help us out? The Water Banking Authority in this, in this case, the water, this not the Water Banking Authority, it's Water Banking with Phoenix. So the I G A that we have in place with the city of Phoenix right now to divert, treat and deliver water to us, our water resources also allows us to recharge with them and have them. Um, recharge into their aquifer storage wells and deliver that water back to us. So we think that's a solution. They said they have capacity. And then we've, as I come forward to every quarterly meeting, I talk about Ranch Mianana Golf Course and that's something that I've been asked to deal with since I've been here. Uh, we actually are working with them on short and midterm solutions to help lower their water use, both the losses on the lakes and potentially irrigation improvements. We also have midterm projects. That's that there's overlap between all these projects midterm being zero now all the way up. Uh, past twenty twenty five in the next five years where we have to work on water agreements. And that's the goal there is to get us access to the long term storage credits that the town does already have in our name. And to give us access to the water that the Arizona Water Banking Authority has put in the ground for the on behalf of the state and the municipal industrial users, which the town is one. Um, and then we have to get into really looking at long term solutions like Harka Hale Valley or the Bartlet Dam New Storage Project. You know, uh, we need new water supplies. Um, there's no way around that and probably decisions are going to have to be made in the next uh, next few years to actually participate. And we were already part of Bartlet Dam, uh, but you know, we need to find a firm solution. And then long term is just any new agreements for water exchanges that can help add to that. And is there any other way to purchase a Colorado River Supplies? You know, everybody's looking for this and we're all working to fight for fighting for the same water resources at this point in fact, but we're just going to keep our eyes opened. On that. So let me get into some more details about some of the specific initiatives we're working on. Your water conservation. Be able to work with our customers to actually limit their existing water use. That does extend our water resources. Realistically, I think a five percent target is good. If we can get more than that, great. I think that's realistic. You know, we have done and we're getting close to the end of the upgrade of the metering system to the A M I automatic metering infrastructure. Where we actually will have most, not quite, but close to real time data from customers. So we can actually start working with them. We can see things like leaks earlier, help them also participate. The my three sixty dot com is actually the application that they can be set up to. They can set their own parameters. They can watch their own water use. Um, but helping to do that. And then in the capital program, we have rolling that out into Desert Hills also to try and get that wrapped up in the next couple of years. So that hopefully in a few years, we have all our customers, all forty four hundred customers actually on the A M I metering system, which will help us out to understand where the water is being used and help go after the high users. But we also want to work on focused efforts on the highest water users. Um, you know, uh, there are some. Uh, you know, we mentioned Ranch Mianana a lot, but there's actually a lot of individual customers that use a lot of water in Desert Hills specifically. There's a elementary school out there that uses a lot of waters are our second biggest water customer in the system. So we need to start working on and we figure by working on those high customers, if they can, any reductions they do have a big as a bigger impact, but we want all customers to work on this. We put in the budget process for next year actually to develop the conservation program. So that was a budget supplemental. We did a hundred thousand dollars of to do the study to help wrap it all together to come up something that's going to work for Cave Creek. And then the marketing materials, et cetera, and then a hundred thousand dollars to initiate that program, whether that's rebates that we offer people or just outreach. We might need to bring consultants into just to do the consult consultations. If we want to work with people on say outdoor landscaping, sometimes you need you need to actually go to the site and actually tell them, you know, this is your water meter. This is what type of watering that your plant needs. Our current staff resources are stretched, just keeping the infrastructure alive. So this is augmenting that and going forward. So we did a two hundred thousand dollars next year to kick the program off and then a hundred thousand ongoing and then we'll evaluate the effectiveness of that. But we're not sure what we're offering. Is it rebates or again, just consultations? But that'll be coming next year, which is only a few months into next fiscal year, which is only a few months away. And then we also have the utility advisory committee. One of the things that since we've reengaged that group. We've talked to them about and they brought forward some great ideas on just marketing outreach and other things. So we want to use that as a as another tool. Again, it's a community based group that comes together that can help go out back to the community and bring those ideas forward. So we're looking forward to it and we do think water conservation could help. It's not a solution. It's not the silver bullet, but it could actually help us out. And I think we need to be more proactive with them.
Sean, the the five percent number, how do you arrive at that? It seems very low. It it is that based on, well, there are other towns that have been through this. Is that is that the number that they came up with?
I've looked at some other conservation programs. I've worked in the other municipalities and you know, two to three percent is actually sometimes what you look at. I think we can get a little bit better and with our metering infrastructure, I do think the the five percent is doable just because we can effectively get things like leaks stopped earlier. So we could challenge ourselves to go higher. Uh, we just threw this in as a staff target. We wanted to have a target team toward. So if you want us to go higher, we could try that and see if that sort of challenges us to to reach that higher next higher level.
We use seventy five percent more water in July than we do in January. Which is why, you know, outdoor water use has got to be one of the main targets of the conservation because that's that explains that seventy five percent. When fewer people are in town and the restaurants aren't as busy. So I I I think there's a pretty substantial. Um, opportunity, especially with outdoor water.
As our first swag at it, so we can challenge ourselves to do better.
Would it? Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
We figure if we had to have a number. So yeah, maybe that's a little more conservative, but good feedback. Thank you. Um, restarting the Cave Creek Wells. So a little bit of history, again, it was nineteen fifty seven fifty four that the Cave Creek Water Company started providing. Domestic water service. Uh, we found some records from between nineteen eighty five and nineteen ninety nine of Cave Creek Water Usage and the wells. Uh, and they averaged about three hundred and eighty acre feet a year. That was running thirteen different wells. So we're looking to restart a few. Um, the groundwater usage peaked just in nineteen ninety nine, which is when the Cave Creek Water Treatment Plant came online. When Cave Creek Water Transitioned to treating surface water, about three hundred and seventy eight acre feet. So this is good historical background to see how much potentially we were getting out of the aquifer. But they were also struggling. I think they they knew that they couldn't just rely on groundwater. So moving forward and again, I don't think we'll get three hundred and seventy eight acre feet of groundwater supplies unless we try to get more wells functionally running. And that's going to be difficult for us. Um, but we are looking at three existing wells and I got graphic for the next slide will show that that we're trying to um. Uh, we've investigated, well, actually we've done videos on all three of them as of today. And we've cleaned and tested one and we've actually cleaned and we're about to test the second and we'll be get the third one done before July. That'll give us the parameters to then equip them next year and there's money in the capital program to bring those wells back into service to some capacity. Um, we think that could provide some short term relief. Um, we have to, we're actually testing both volume of water available at them. Um, and then also the water qualities. That's a big factor, whether it currently meets drinking water standards or is it something we could use for irrigation or to meet our obligations to Ranch Mianana? Or is it something we could with a little bit of treatment, we could actually put through the water treatment plant and then use as domestic water? That's all what we're evaluating right now. So we do have a team of Clear Creek Associates helping us with the hydrogeology. Uh, Black and Beach to help us look at evaluating what we can do with the water and then, um, you know, we'll wrap that up. And then Clear Creek will come up with a specification next year that we can then next, I always say next year, but it's next fiscal year, which starts July first. To then go out and equip these wells. So graphically, these are the wells we're looking at. It's in the town core. The ones in orange, uh, starting on the the west side, the triangle wells, Burcross and Grapevine Road. Um, we actually just got that videoed today. Uh, we believe there's some material to bottom. We're going to have to talk to the vendor to see if they can get remove the material out. There's a piece of wood down around two hundred feet down. It looks like a section of a column pipe that might have fallen down. So they may be able to hook it up and then find out what's down there. The right well is the one on the treatment plant site and we tested that last year. It tested out about two hundred gallons a minute. Um, it had fairly good sustained flows, but then again, if we run it consistently, we expect that to drop. We see some old historical records and that was ran pretty consistently for a number of years. And then just before the treatment plant came online, they started, uh, the the flow started tapering off. The Pee Wee Well on Linda Drive is uh, was currently cleaned. So we're going to be testing that. I think by next week, we'll actually be testing that way. We can see. The last wall that was actually functioning in the system is the Vermish Well over in Desert Awareness Park on the east side of town. We've not like neglected that one. We've elected to use that as sort of a last well because while it was functionally working, it also had a problem with the casing and and some sanding. So we'd probably have to do regill on that casing, but it had high arsenic. So we're trying to evaluate these other three wells to see if they had what their water water quality is before we go back to the Vermish Well. But the Vermish is still on our radar screens at this point. The good thing is that the old water company did actually do a well line as you're showing the the blue line on this graphic. The wells were all header together so that they could be brought to the water treatment plant. So when they built the treatment plant in nineteen ninety, they actually allowed that functionally. So we don't have to do well head treatment. We can have other options and we're going to pursue all the option we can. Uh, recharging with the city of Phoenix, what does that look like? So we have the I G A in place. Uh, it allows us to um, use, we have access to three of their. A R S wells, aquifer storage and recovery wells. They're south of Carefree Highway that they've identified. They were identified in the I G A. We have our agreements in place with Phoenix. And we also have our permits in place through Arizona Department of Water Resources that we can actually recharge and recover from these facilities. So everything's in place.
So Sean, we have about four hundred people in town right now that are on wells and a whole bunch over in Desert Hills. I realize they're the Desert Hills folks are not our customers. We're talking about recharge, you know, with Phoenix. Shouldn't we, if we're going to be pumping groundwater from our town wells, shouldn't we try to be recharging water from our wells? And we can do that quite easily with the equivalent of French drains. So for the people currently on wells, it would help if everybody had French drains in the low lying areas of their property. That would recharge through the collegiate and it would provide more water availability to those town wells. So maybe instead of getting three or four years out of them, you could keep it sustained.
Yeah, a very good comment, Mayor Councilmember. Um, one of the things that we found out is because the sub basin that we're specifically in the Cave Creek Carefree Sub Basin. Uh, the groundwater table actually is fairly high in this area. So the ability to actually for us to recharge is limited because legally we have an issue with trying to recharge. Because example, the triangle well, the groundwater table is actually down at twenty feet. Um, and the problem is if we try to recharge in any of the in in our areas, but if we have the customers actually recharging.
Yeah, I'm actually talking about. I'm actually talking about people who have houses. So anytime they want to build an addition or a casita or anything else, you say, okay, great. Have all the water that comes off your roof, uh, go down into a French drain. That will then filter back downstream because we are, the town of Cave Creek is downstream from the people further north. That could just be a part, you might want to take a look at the town code and see if that's a, that's a smart thing to do.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. Yeah. Again, talking about recharging with Phoenix, uh, our thought was for the last few years, we've been, um, the town has had excess, uh, municipal industrial water supplies. So about three years ago, we got all the permits in place to allow us to work with the, uh, both Phoenix and Central Arizona Project. We elected to start by recharging with, um, uh, Central Arizona Project. What we've realized is that water is sort of locked in those facilities, how do we get direct access to it? So we thought the mechanism that's already in place with Phoenix is we pay them to recharge that or put the water into their wells and they can draw it and deliver it back to us. The mechanism is already there and we do think that this could help us out very quickly in the shortage and get us into twenty seven and potentially into twenty eight and bridge that gap and gives us more breathing space. So, uh, we've reached out to Phoenix, um, um, they have told us, I needed to get just email from them that the capacity is available for us for after July of this year. To actually recharge about five hundred acre feet between those three wells this year. Next year, we do not expect to have any, um, um, NIA water, non agro social water. But we do think there might be some excess CAP water and whatever we have would be best, I think, to put in that ground with Phoenix to make it physically available in the first couple of years of the shortage to be, be brought out to us. Water exchange agreements, so that's getting us access to, Brad talked a little bit about that, uh, the long term storage credits. That's the legal, um, that's the credit account that are the banking, uh, statement that we've put in place where we've recharged water somewhere. And we've got paper water for doing that recharge. So we have, uh, the town has, as I mentioned, has worked with Central Arizona Project for a few years. We have about two thousand acre feet recharge and long term storage credits. Most of that is in the Hieroglyphics facility, which is out, uh, north of Grand Avenue, a hundred six, a hundred and sixty third avenue. Um, and then we have a little bit in the, uh, our free facility, which is down in the our free by Lake Pleasant Parkway and Happy Valley Road. So we have act, we, we need to figure out how to get access to that water. But we also have the Arizona Water Banking Authority, as Brad alluded to a little bit earlier. So it, it started in nineteen ninety six, um, they were putting unused, uh, uh, CAP Colorado River Water into the ground. And what I got off their website was just, they have three point eight million acre feet of stored credit on behalf of Arizona. And that was put in the ground specifically for municipal industrial users like the town. So now the next trick is how do we get access to that water? And that's what we're looking at, the water exchange agreements would be, you know, we do not have physical access to our water at the car, in the Hieroglyphics or our free facilities, because we're not there, we don't have wells next to it. And we don't have where Arizona Water Banking Authority has put the ground, uh, water into the ground. We don't physically have way of draw it, but we can work with the agencies that do, that are located near those facilities so that we can actually pull that water out. We're talking to a couple of West Valley cities, um, that have ability to actually recover that groundwater on our behalf and do arrangements with them. We've had some good discussions. We hope by the end of the year, we can actually bring one of those agreements to council. So that'd be something that again, just we're working with other agencies and just using connections and just also, you know, goodwill and just saying, you know, how can we, how can we, can, can you help Cave Creek out? And they're actually willing to work with us as so far. So, um, but again, getting access to that water is going to be something that while we have that checking account of water credits, we need to get physical water to be able to put in the pipes and that's what we're working on these agreements to do that. Uh, Rancho Minyana Golf Course, uh, we always talk about that, you know, we deliver our effluent to them. And we also deliver them backwash water, um, from the water treatment plant. And then the past, we've given them groundwater from the wells. We also give them right now, since the wells aren't functioning, we actually, uh, during the summer peak demands, we send them raw cap water. So the lake system that we deliver to, uh, we know has issues. It's got, uh, liners that are leaking, uh, there's evaporation just on the fact that the surface area and there's actually overflow, which is almost the worst of the three, which is when we can, we don't have control over our deliveries to them. They've, the, the lakes are full and they effectively overflow down the wash. So we've looked at all three components and we've talked to them and actually we have really good discussions with them. They're willing to work with us on an evaluation, uh, study to look at the liners, to see what it might take to repair those liners so that, um, and then as part of that, they're actually, we had to open discussion with them. Saying evaporation, which is really based on the surface area, why do you need the three lakes? What would happen if you eliminated them? So, um, could we get them to eliminate one or more of the lakes? That's the discussion. Part of the study looking at the liners is just to try and capture what, you know, um, they have no drawings, the current staff at Rancho Minyana have no drawings. So they don't know the depth of those lakes. And then, uh, we need to evaluate what it would take to repair those liners effectively and, and to try and couch, uh, you know, is it a million dollars or a five billion dollar project to replace that? So we'd be working on a small study with them, split the cost of twenty five thousand dollars with the studies, about twelve thousand dollars for the town to participate in. And we can get, move them, help them move forward to actually figure out what the process may be to figure that out. Cause anything we can save on the, on the, 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 their lake irrigation system is actually water we don't have to provide to them. So it goes back into our water portfolio. So that's where we see the benefit to the town. We're also working with the city of Phoenix on their, their, the connection. So again, the, the overflow is that something that we need to control, which means we need another spot to put our effluent. When it's a wet winter, uh, which sadly we didn't have this last year, or if there's a good monsoon storm during the summertime, those lakes peak up very quickly because they don't need the irrigation demand. And then we need to put, put that water somewhere else to benefit. So our, our thought was and came out of the master plan is a connection to the city of Phoenix to send them the effluent down to their system. And then we get an effluent exchange for rock, for actual water resources that then can be delivered back to us through the interconnect site.
So do you, do you have a, a measurement device on the overflow? So if, so if we have a big monsoon str, uh, going, you can actually stop, stop any, uh, take the effluent from the wastewater plant, put it to Phoenix and,
Yeah.
and capture rainwater thereby.
Yeah, Mayor Council, we've actually looked at, actually, and the, the golf course staff have been really agreeable. We've actually talked about doing something inside of their pumping station to get both their flow meter data directly. And then putting a, a level transponder into their wet wells, we'd know the level of the lake right away. We do have an overflow meter at the, uh, we're just trying to figure out how to connect that together, but this really the lake level we need to monitor. And we're actually thinking about putting emission system out there. So we'd actually see their irrigation demands as well as the lake levels directly so that we better understand it. And then we start seeing them going up, they, they're, we know because their pumps aren't running and they're not pushing water in the system and the lakes are coming up, we know to divert. So.
Good, that's, that's good project.
Yeah.
Sean, do you want to also talk a little bit about, they actually offered up some turf reduction. I know the bullet says that, but they, they offered some serious, um, turf reduction, you want to just highlight that?
Yeah, you know, overall, Reggino is a fairly efficient golf course when you look at the size of turf per, per, um, hole. But we, we had conversations where, where they could potentially trim. And one of the ones was actually the, um, the, um, driving range. The driving range is about eight percent of their total turf area. So we talked about, you know, why do you need to have, why do you need to be irrigating that? So they, they offered up about not even overseeding, uh, is the first thing, so that helps out. And then they are looking at some of the other holes where they might be able to trim and help that out. So while they overall, and the, if you look at the scheme of how many acres, uh, uh, an eighteen hole golf course has, Rancho Minyana is fairly efficient, but they're willing to work with us to be more efficient also. So I think so, good partnership and I'll give credit to, uh, Mike Allred and, and, um, uh, Andy Short, uh, you know, the owner and the general manager out there. They're willing to come to the table and work with us. They understand the issue the town's facing and they understand, you know, they, while they have a contractual obligation, they also understand that if, if it, if it comes down to it and I have to decide between keeping their lakes full and delivering water to the customers, it's going to go to the customers first. They understand that conversation, so they're, they're directly involved in a solution. So. We've mentioned Harkahela Valley before, um, this is a sort of a long term solution we're looking at. And I'm just sort of repeating some stuff that I, I put out, um, before just about the project itself. So Harkahela Valley is, is, um, an area west of Tonapaw in, in, uh, far west, it's outside of Maricopa County. And it's actually said, it's an area that was set aside for groundwater withdrawals. It's, uh, since it's outside the Phoenix AMA, it was actually set aside for to, to import water into the Phoenix Active Management Area, which Cave Care, Cave Creek is part of. So we're looking at evaluating that project through, uh, a few months ago, we came forward, uh, with a non disclosure agreement. So I can't ask, uh, add too much to it, but this is one of the long term projects we're considering. And just graphically, it shows Harkahela Valley is on the, on the extreme west side. The advantage of the town is that Harkahela Valley water, the, the thought would be that water can get put into the cap canal, can be delivered to the town, to our treatment plant or to our partner with the city of Phoenix, so they can treat and divert that to us. So it's something I think it's worth us looking at as a long term solution. Again, we need to add, as, as Brad's slides pointed out, we need to add to our water portfolio.
How long, uh, long term? Five years, ten years?
When we talk about long term, in the case of, uh, groundwater for Harkahela Valley, that's actually would be a hundred years your water supply.
I know, but before we would get a drop of that.
Oh, uh, Mayor Councilmember, yeah, you know, that's what's being discussed and that's part of what we have to negotiate with that group. You know, could we get it in the next five years? I think it's, might be realistic, but there's a lot of other things need to be put in place. It's, it's getting access to the groundwater and then also, uh, figuring out, uh, and then probably participating in other projects to withdraw and treat and deliver that water to the cap canal. Then working out all the agreements kept now. So, you know, with what's happening in the water resources area right now, everybody's searching for solutions. So I think a lot of projects are going to accelerate very quickly in the next few years. And especially as we get closer to a determination on what is the cut to Arizona going to be and specifically to Colorado River users.
So another big issue is that the, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that, that Arizona will no longer allow subdivisions to be built based on groundwater. Which means. I knew you were here for reasons, Michelle. Correct my mistakes.
That is true inside the, most of the basins in the Phoenix AMA, currently the Department of Water Resources says we're finished growing on groundwater. I don't know if that's true or not, because there could be arguments either way, but we're close. The Harkahela groundwater, it is groundwater, but it's not considered groundwater in the same way because it's specifically authorized for use. So it would be allowable to support growth.
I, I, I think the point is though, that, that, uh, if you're going to build new subdivisions in the AMA, it's going to be Harkahela, it's not going to be cap water. And it's not going to be groundwater that's in the AMA. So what's left?
Well, there are, there are designated providers that still have room to grow in their own portfolios. So it's, it's, it's a situation of haves and have nots.
We're one of the have nots.
So. How much is Hark, roughly, well, Harkahela to get a drop or get a, uh, acre foot of water to Cave Creek? What's the difference in price between Bartlett Lake Dam and Harkahela? Rough order magnitude?
Well. We can't talk about the price of Harkahela because that would be something covered by the non disclosure agreement. But I think Sean knows what the, um.
Kind of have it down here on page two.
I, it's for, for budgetary purposes in the capital program, we had to put something in, so, uh, Mayor Councilmember.
That's a guesstimate.
Yeah, we, we, we threw something in just because obviously with the next five years, we do believe the town's going to need to make a purchase of new water resources. We did an estimate in the capital program, I think of just to hold a number of twenty thousand dollars per acre foot for the water resource allocation and up to seven thousand dollars for treatment of that water to put into the system. So, and right now in the capital program, there is a project associated and we put something, bless you, um, to, to hold the number. We don't know how firm those numbers are and how realistic they are, but we needed to put something in for the capital program. In relation to Bartlett, I can do next slide to show you that. So the Bartlett Dam Expansion, it's formerly called the Verdi Reservoir Sedimentation, uh, Mitigation Project. It's a, it's a bit of a mouthful because Bartlett Dam is on the Verdi River and it's addressing the issue of, of, of Horseshoe Dam. The sedimentation behind Horseshoe Dam limiting the storage capacity. Uh, we were just informed, uh, we are now, we are a participant in that, um, in September last year, town, uh, uh, council authorized us to join the, the steering committee. We're a non voting member in the steering committee and we asked for a thousand acre feet of storage, which would get us two hundred and eighty six acre feet per year of average annual yield out of that. Can't be used for growth, that's what they've told us, but the cost increase to that project is recently just tripled. So we were just notified as a steering committee member that, um, what we were thinking is ten thousand, um, uh, or it was ten thousand dollars per firm acre foot of, 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 of available water. It's now gone up to thirty thousand dollars on that project. So. So it's something, again, at this level, it's, it's all budgetary numbers, um, but, yeah, they came back with a more detailed design. They'd been spending some time looking at the actual dam construction, which goes back to where can you actually, um, extract material? What you're going to do to have to treat it? So they've gone that next level and they've actually gone out and done some draft quarries, so they know where they can actually pull the material. Um, it's going to be a roller compacted concrete, uh, structure. So now they've actually tested that out with Bureau of Reclamation. They understand what it's going to take to do that. So that's why the estimate, they have much more details. Why it tripled is partly just the market and they are still forecasting out, you know, they're not anticipating that project even getting author congressional authorization until after twenty seven. Um, and that's the goal, would half of it be funded by the congressional, um, um, allocation? And then, uh, that they're looking at, they're, they even suggested that the cost estimate could go up. But they, they felt comfortable in coming up with an estimate that's three times of when we joined last year, there was talked about a billion dollar project. Uh, one point one billion dollars when we joined last year, the new estimate is three point three. And that's not accounting for the relocation of a sixty nine KVA or two hundred and thirty KVA power, power line that needs to get relocated because of the quarry. So there's challenges, no matter where we go. These are large projects, you know, I, I, you know, we talked about Harkahela, we're, we're not just committed to any one project, but we need to be thinking about everything. And this, this, just to show you the scope of the Bartlett Dam project, this is the, the graphic of the existing dam, which was surprisingly built in a thousand days. It's, it's a sort of a marvel, an engineering marvel, how it got built. But trying to expand that structure is basically they're going to bury the existing structure in the new one. It's going to, the new structure will be a little bit downstream of it. Um, it's a massive project undertake. And just, you know, I thought it's good just to sit, to take a second just to reflect. So what has the town staff done in relation to not just do our master plan, not just do everything else? We've actually put some policies in place, we've been thinking about this for a while. In nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty one, we did the water resource policy. So that had changed and updated the twenty seventeen policy. So this town has been thinking about water resources for a number of years and, and, and commitments of those water resources. So in twenty twelve, the policy, uh, said that, you know, we allow up to one inch meter for property. And it, uh, basically put a restriction that any new subdivisions need to bring new water resources. Well, that helped us out because especially in Desert Hills, um, we were getting a lot of lot splits. And our definition of a lot split was the, the split of a lot into three, uh, uh, three splits to create a fourth lot was a subdivision. So we actually were able to use that policy very effectively for a number of years to actually restrict, uh, the limit, the number of new, uh, re, um, new connections we're making in Desert Hills. In twenty one, we went through the evaluation, we actually, uh, I think you got mentioned before, is that Clear Creek did an evaluation and showed that Desert Hills really was a system that was built on groundwater resources and it didn't have, there wasn't sustainable groundwater resources out there. So the town made the hard decision of limiting new, um, connections outside our municipal limit, which is in Kalis Desert Hills. And then also, um, uh, putting a volumetric limit on new connections of half an acre foot. So it's really good policy in twenty one and we've been living with that and it's been very effective for us to, to restrict our new water customers and make sure that we grow sustainably. Um, in twenty, after that water resource policy is put in place in twenty twenty two, we, we finished off our water storage and drought management plan. That was the document that then took that, that water resource policy and then it put it into effect. And we actually, with that policy, um, that management plan, we actually did a lot of code changes. And those code changes specifically gave us a definition of what water shortage is to Cave Creek. That was more specific than the tiered reductions that they were talking about on the Colorado River. It went from a zero to a level four, uh, zero being that there's, uh, more water, there's excess water available to us. And we actually have water available to recharge to a level four meant that we were actually forecasting a twenty percent shortage in our water resources available based on our, our, what we expect our customers to use. So, but it also changed town code to allow council to enact things quickly in case that gets that, that, um, um, severe allows for, um, violations, warnings and surcharges to be put in place. So we're, you know, by having that twenty two policy in place, that sets us up for what we think might happen in twenty seven. And that was good. So we've been doing this, we've been talking about this for a long time. So just to summarize everything, so I know we've talked about a lot, a lot of star, you know, I remember back in twenty twenty three as part of the master plan, we actually presented a lot of these projections back then. People now remember it, but I've been, you know, it's been on my forefront, uh, ever since that timeframe from the master planning efforts that we showed shortages. But we've been working to try and address this, you know, as, as Brad said, you know, we, we don't want to present you with the problem and then walk away. You know, as staff, we've been working diligently to try and put solutions in place. We've, uh, met modified town code and policies. Uh, we've done extensive work just to clean up our mapping of the systems and where our certificates are. And then it's the master plan, we, we mapped out again where the certificates are, where they are in their build out projections. And where we have existing neighborhoods that might not have a certificate, but do we have to say, do they have a, a, a right that we need to oblige to, to meet? As well as mapping out who could connect to the system, you know, how far could the system, because there's what private well start to drive up, uh, dry up people. You know, how far could the system, because as private wells start to drive up, dry up, people may be asking to connect to our system. So we did all that as part of the master planning exercise, which then wrapped together in the integrated master plan to help clarify all these issues for us. So we're working on all these solutions, short, mid and long term that you're, we're sort of, we have to prioritize, but we're also working, there's a lot of things in the air, but there's not one simple water solution for this town, that's our sort of our takeaway and just, we want to leave you with that. But you know, we are diligently working on multiple solutions to try and come up with. You know, we're not going to have one silver bullet, but we're going to have multiple solutions and as Brad slides allude to, they're going to add together to help balance our portfolio. For what we expect to be, we're planning for rejecting for a 25% cut. If, if they come back and say that it's going to be higher than that, yeah, well, now I won't say all bets are off, we're just going to have to potentially look at accelerating some things. And for this town, it is difficult because we will have to look at how we can pay for these things, especially if we're talking about new water resources and new water projects. It is a challenge to build it into the capital program. But we've done our best with the draft capital program that you have seen before you, the 26 to 30 CIP has money set aside for water resource related projects. And that's our best projections at this point. And, and top of that is there, there are infrastructure things that we need to finish off and improve to improve the system also. So with that, we're sort of at the end of the formal presentation and we can take any more questions, council, or I'm not sure if you want to open it up to public questions or not.
We'll stick with council, yeah, questions or, or I, I guess to, the, the deliverable out of this meeting is direction. So at, at some point, I'd like to have staff indicate whether, what direction you'd like to hear from us so we can do that. We can't vote, but we can talk about it. So Tom, go ahead.
Um, I just had a question. Uh, is there anything not in your report that you would recommend without putting you on the spot, but putting you on the spot that we could be doing with Town of Carefree? Any partnership opportunities or any, any approach that they're taking that we might want to mimic? Anything happening over there that could be of interest to us?
Yeah, I talked a little bit, Mayor Councilmember, I've talked to a little bit Greg Crossman, so you know, as far as physical interconnects, there's only one after all the disconnect work and it's actually a one-way interconnect for us to treat and deliver water to them is actually what it's set up as per the IGA that's still in place between the two agencies. You know, we've looked at, and we're trying to leverage our relationship with City Phoenix because there's two things is they could treat, revert, treat and deliver water to us. And then the IGA also allows for up to a 60-day emergency, which we've had that conversation, what that would be. So while we're limited to 1,000 gallons a minute, average to the interconnect site, they think they could support up to 1,500 gallons a minute if, if necessary in an emergency. But as far as discussing water portfolios, balances, we haven't really had that much discussion with, with Greg Crossman, my peer over there, their general manager.
Just two more quick questions. Do we provide water as a town for water haulers for town customers currently?
Right now, there are two active Desert Hills, there's two active remaining Desert Hills water haul accounts, which we do on a, they come in, they request that service and then we still do have the water fill station at the Water Ranch for the West Side Dwyer customers. So those, that's the specific area on 32nd Street, north of Joy Ranch Road, where those customers, the town put that in place in 2017 for them. But those are the, that's the limit of what we allow for, so it was set aside for some specific areas and there's just two existing active customers in Desert Hills that are still getting any haul water service.
And then just one last question, unless I'm understanding, how would you get the effluent from the ponds to Phoenix? Do we have the current ability to transport that or would we build that?
Yes, good questions. Actually, what we're looking at is leveraging the effluent pipeline that runs from the plant at 44th Street and Carefree Highway and along the north side of Carefree Highway. City Phoenix has, their sewer system is just south of Carefree Highway. It's not Black Mountain, I forget the name of the roads, right near, next to Fry's, there's actually a 10-inch sewer line. So we, Black and Beach had actually done some modeling for us as part of the master plan. They think if we extend the line south of Carefree Highway, we'd be able to actually divert, create a diversion structure on the north side from our effluent line and actually divert it directly down into their sewer system. What they don't want is the pressure at that lines, we're out there, that's the details we have to work out, you know, that line operates about 180 pounds of pressure, so they don't want that directly going into their sewer system. So we have some details to work on, but we actually have a meeting with them in two weeks with their engineering staff to go through the details for the next step. And we've actually invited them to participate in it, we put it into the capital program for next year for design services. And their staff, we're going to participate in that selection process and be part of that team with us to help us select someone to help us do that detailed design.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I. I think we're going to end up, whether we want to or not, participating in both Bartlett Lake Dam and the Harkway Hala Basin, and I'll, I'll tell you why. Anytime you're pumping groundwater, the more you pump, the deeper you have to go. The deeper you have to go, the more expensive and the more treatment that's going to come with it. So I don't see where. I, I think for 10 to 15 years, Harkway Hala will be great. And then I think it's going to start getting more expensive. Where I think Bartlett Lake Dam, it's a once, one and done, and I think we're, unfortunately, we need more than one or two sources of water. We live in a desert, we really need at least three. And I just don't see any other opportunities to do it and I understand that's the worst of all worlds because it's the most expensive. But I just don't see where we can say, we'll do this and not do that, because if we make the wrong choice, we're screwed. I mean, totally. As, as a town. And it'll affect all of our property values, it'll affect all the future of the town. And I think unfortunately, uh, this council and the, and a couple councils previous to this are being saddled with some lack of vision in past councils, and I'm talking past councils 15 to 20 years ago. So I, I think, I think we need to think long and hard, but I don't see where we can back out anything to do one over the other. I think we're going to have to do all of them, unfortunately.
Other comments and questions?
I, I have a, just a question about the Phoenix Interconnect, Sean. Can you tell us, give us an update on the status of that project and how valuable that is to us?
Yeah, so for construction activity, we're, we're getting close to the midway point. Right now, the anticipated completion date is June of next year because of the delivery of the main switchgear, which I keep asking them to, to accelerate. So by the end of this calendar year, Phoenix has told us they'll be complete with their improvement south of Carefree Highway, which is their pipeline work and their work on their booster pump station. So they'll be ready to deliver water to us. Sadly, it's going to take until next summer before we can accept that water. It's a huge impro- improvement to the distribution system because it also, it's got a, a thousand gallon a minute of treatment delivery, up to 1,000 gallons a minute of supply. So put that in context, our CAP pipeline right now delivers a maximum of 2,100 gallons a minute. So it's almost half of our CAP supplies, but the fact that we can put it into a million gallon storage reservoir and keep that reservoir there means that in case we have an outage on the, of our treatment plant or our cap pipeline, we could run the system uh, off the storage we have in our other reservoirs and off the City of Phoenix interconnected. And then again, because, because with our conversation with Phoenix can temporarily, we could ramp up, I think up to 1,500 gallons a minute. So almost meet all of our demands for a few days, so if we had a major cat catastrophe on the pipeline. So it also helped improve just the distribution system right now. We're seeing some challenges in our pressure zone one and that's south of Stagecoach Pass Estates from Cave Creek Road all the way out to 24th Street. Because it's all fed from pressure reducing valves, it's hard to balance that pressure. The City of Phoenix Interconnect actually put a new booster pump station down in Pressure Zone One to allow us to base pressurize that. So we'll think we'll even out the pressures down there. Um, and yeah, the fact that we can, and especially in the winter time, we will get enough flow, even 1,000 gallons a minute to potentially run the system off the Phoenix water and then do major improvement work on them, both the cap pipeline and the treatment plant are huge for us from a maintenance standpoint. You know, it's, it's hard to, the analogy I was given once is running this, this, uh, system is like trying to, to maintain an airplane while you're in the air. You're out on the wing here trying to make sure that the engine's working. You know, we'll be able to actually shut the plane down and land and do some work and then take off again, which would be a huge improvement for us. So yeah, from an infrastructure standpoint, it's substantial, I think, just from the ability to be tied into a much larger system. Although we're, they're treating our water resources to be able to have that ability to get that water into the system, I think it's going to be a huge thing for the town moving forward.
And, and Brad, I was just wondering if you were able to find out the total committed acre feet that we have for the town?
Yeah, Mayor Vice Mayor, I was. And so in the master plan, it's roughly 800 acre feet additional above existing demands. So that's a total of roughly 2,600 acre feet.
So you guys have pretty good memories, thank you.
Yeah.
Brad, Flagstaff, and you were a director at Flagstaff, they, they had a robust conservation program. How much did they save?
So council there set a target of, it's not in terms of percent, it's in terms of GPCD and Sean just, we just talked about the 5%, literally. And you need to do some conversions. So they projected a 20 GPCD and I need to do the math of what it means to you to, for the town of what a 20.
We were in about 300, I get, but that includes Rancho Mianana.
Yeah, so we need to parse it out a little better before I stand there and give you some numbers, Mayor. I know you're a numbers person, so I don't want to give you anything. However, but what the town did, or what the City of Flagstaff has done, is a very detailed analysis of to come up with your five or 10 or whatever target council's interested in, is staff had to go back and figure out, well, instead of a pie in the sky number, let's analytically figure out of all the different conservation options, how much of those are going to, if implemented fully, how much water will you save? And then you'll have a suite of options of those and then you, then we'll be able to come up with a better number of what Sean is saying, is it 5%? Is it 10% on realistic quantitative numbers? So that's what the city did and that's how they derived their 20 GPCD over 20 years. More than what they've already done, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, and what, what the city has already done to date since the 90s.
Was that voluntary or mandatory conservation?
So all of what this Flagstaff is doing is voluntary at the moment. But they're thinking about mandatory and one of the challenges, and I just was quickly looking at your numbers here, is mandatory takes enforcement. Enforcement takes people. I'll just kind of leave it at that. It's not just mandatory, it actually takes a whole program on. Now that community does every summer, they have what they call water cops, which are just people riding around, it's educational, it's not enforcement. Just to begin to be in the community and just telling, sharing that with people, whether by request or whether by drive-bys and they see some ordinance violation. That's how that community started to do their customer outreach is being active in the community for education.
I think there's been discussion here historically, but I'm not sure, but has there been or should there be discussion on Desert Hills regarding potential interest by the City of Phoenix to maybe acquire it? I guess apparently there's not a lot of interest in buying it outright, but would it improve the town situation to get back to its original purchase of the Cave Creek Water Company? Then we had the situation years ago where Desert Hills was bought for reasons which probably cannot be articulated this evening. But have we explored that? I think there's been some discussions, but is that something we should talk about or consider?
You know, I think the town needs to be considering everything, Mayor Councilmember. My discussions with a prior town manager, care director, said that she had actually had that discussion with City Phoenix. And they sort of said, no, no, thank you. Partly because of the, the infrastructure out there, the way they look at it would be, there would be a total rebuild for them. So they would be starting from scratch or having to build a program to basically rebuild all the system out there. So whether it's worth of pursuing that again, it's really the, the challenge with Desert Hills is the water resources, you know. People, I know this council is very much aware and a lot of, I think our, our public are aware is that, you know, the town purchased Desert Hills and purchased Cave Creek water in the same year. But ever since then, we've been having to augment the groundwater, the failing, the, the well production has not been as high as Desert Hills as they need to be. So while the system year over year hasn't grown substantially, we've had this, the, the well production has decreased from 2007 until today by about half. So we've had to supplement, instead of putting four, sending them 400 acre feet of water, we were, depending on whether we have wells, we've gone over 600, 658 feet of water that we've had to send to them. That's, while they have some, we were able to secure non-Indian agricultural water, that's a very, we expect that to go to zero. So while it was still beneficial for us to complete that purchase, we're having to augment that system with municipal industrial supplies. The one thing I will point out is with Desert Hills, you know, it is, it helps share the burden of running this system, you know, it's 1,900 customers that do pay their bills, that helps, it helps us distribute the, the, the costs of running this system. Otherwise, we're trying to balance all these large capital projects and improvements on, on, you know, 2,400 or 2,500 Cave Creek, Cave Creek customers, so.
Mr. Mayor, can we speculate what you think the reason was back then that the plant was purchased? Why, it's not inside the town of Cave Creek, why would we have extended service? What would have been the advantage of providing water service outside town limits?
I wasn't here, American Councilmember, to, I, I, I can, I don't know if it's, it's my purview to speculate. I think I understand why things were happening and I do think it had to do with the fact that I think Global Water, which owned the water company at the time, the Cave Creek Water Company, was looking to purchase Desert Hills. Had they purchased Desert Hills, it would have been more difficult for Cave Creek, Cave Creek, the town of Cave Creek to then, what we did is condemn the water system. So I think that was, might have been strategically one of the reasons that we did it.
And then last question. So you think it's an advantage to have obtained it perhaps today because the base of financial impact is widened with them? Because my question was going to be, are we risking the original water company purchased by the town of J. George's company with the current ownership of Desert Wood Hills, do you think?
Uh, Mayor Councilmember, that'd be purely my opinion speculation. I, I, from what I know of the numbers and how our capital program works and our rates work, and in, in 2020 is when we actually separated out and actually differentiated the rate base out there. So up until, from 2007 until 2020, we charged the customers the same. We differentiated that in 2020 to say, no, they're actually importing water resources and there's an additional cost to that. So, you know, there've been good customers, there are really good customers out in Desert Hills and I, you know, I, to me, it's our water system, I treat them the same. And I think my staff treat them all the same and it does help balance that out. You know, this is an expensive little system to run and just having only 2,400, 2,500 customers in Cave Creek to support the full operation is difficult, I think.
I'm sorry, just one last question, so do we charge for gray water to Rancho Mianana?
Mayor Councilmember, yeah, so yeah, the agreement is that they get charged, there's a specific, there's actually multiple components. They get charged if we send them CAP water, but they also get charged the effluent at a certain volume. It's actually, it's the cost of the, it's equivalent of raw CAP water and then they also pay for a cost of pumping it up to them. So it's actually a multiple, uh, multiple tiered calculation. Actually, one of our staff members, Ryan Hill, spends a fair amount of time every month and he's got it down actually to a pretty, pretty certain art where he can actually pull that all together. So we, we do charge them for that, the problem we have with Rancho Mianana is right now the imbalance between there, they get charged for what they draw off for irrigation use, not what we deliver to them. And that's why there's usually about a third of an inefficiency to there. So for every, we deliver typically 450 to 500 acre feet a year, they only use 300. So we're, we've got a gap in water resources to them right now.
Okay.
Other questions? Uh, being a numbers person, if, if, if you lose 1,900 accounts out there, you're talking about water bills that are approaching $200 a month from where they are now. I, I think the criteria for that is what's in the best interest of both Desert Hills people and our own custo, our own, our own residents. And I don't think they're going to be happy with a doubling of water bills. If, and, but if we got, if someone else furnished the water and we didn't have to buy 20 or 30 million dollars worth of water, that would offset a fair amount of that. I also estimated with both systems that just the cost of the water on an average account of 4,400 accounts is about 30 bucks a month. So even with all those extra customers, we're talking about a sizable increase to cover the bond payments. What that is, is a number to cover the bond payments for a, like these 20 or 30 million dollars, I forgot, but it's big. I think that's, that's the bottom line, it's, it's, it's going to be expensive to buy this water. And I, you know, we could run the string out on Bartlett Lake. But the department, the head of the Department of Water Resources recommended Harkway Hala to us in our meeting down there six months ago, eight months ago. But the department, the head of the Department of Water Resources recommended Harkaway Hala to us in our meeting down there six months ago, eight months ago. It's our best, it's our best and our quickest. And everybody's doing it. There's lots and lots of people, lots and lots of help there. Bartlett, you know, we paid $200,000 to join the consortium. Before they'd let us know that it was 3.3 billion rather than 1.1 billion. So the higher that goes and all the uncertainty, you talk about uncertainties of Harkaway Hala. They're going to find a burial ground or an ancient village or a salamander or something's going to be found on the Verde River up there. And the lawsuits that are going to slow that down. That's, so, and, and that's, there's risk there, but there's risk in everything we're doing here. We have some things that are pretty cut and dried, but Harkaway Hala has a little bit of risk. Bartlett has a lot of risk. Yeah, we're, we're dealing in a, in a risk and uncertainty era right now. And I just want to say that I couldn't be happy with a super team we had working on this. It has been a pleasure watching the information. Of course, Michelle was a part of that water policy that separated the two water rates between you. And that was a major break for the rate payers in Cave Creek. And I think your work has been incredibly comprehensive. And I, you know, I, I don't know who else we'd have in the world with the team we have working on this. It really is a pleasure to watch them attack these problems and the uncertainty. I just can't express the uncertainty that we have. Nothing is certain, except the wells aren't certain, the, the water quality isn't certain, Harkaway Hala isn't concerned, Bartlett's not. We don't have any leadership in the pure reclamation. We don't have procedures to get the emergency water that's stored by the state. Uncertainty is everywhere in this whole situation and we have the right team to deal with that. And I, I want to thank each of you for, for your efforts and what you've produced so far.
So to piggyback on what the mayor just said, I know when Councilman Bunch was still here, he had mentioned that the Sierra Club was also getting to be more powerful these days. And if there's a bird or something down there, as he mentioned, some sort of animal that could just throw everything into chaos.
But we have time to make that, those decisions, the, both the Harkaway Hala and the Bartlett are still out in front of us. But I, I, I don't think, and I like counsel to say, I don't think we ought, we ought to be charging for one or the other in the rates. I don't think we can afford to, and we shouldn't start collecting money from our water customers until it's, the smoke clears a little bit. We're going to have, we know we're going to have to do some water. But not all the water. I, I just, you know, we've got more time to, to deal with those rates, but I don't want to charge money too soon. It's, it's tough enough to charge higher rates without doing it too early.
Question. So currently, we paid for $200,000 to be in the room, basically with the Bartlett Dam. What would it cost us at this point with the inflation already being predicted to be voting members? Should we get voted in by the towns?
Just to rephrase this, Mayor Councilmember, so yeah, so we joined on as a non-voting member. I don't think they would allow us to change the, I think the cost, if we had wanted to go in as a voting member was, I think off the top of my head right now. It was four or $500,000 or it might've been closer to $600,000. So I can't remember exactly, but it was, it was a step increase. I'll, I'll say the one thing that we have, because Brad's joined me at a few of the meetings. It's actually been good just because of the connections we've made with some other water users and water resource people throughout the valley. So I would say it's not money thrown away for this town. I think it was good for us to be part of that and we are still committed to the project right now. So. But it was a substantial increase. I think it was like a factor of three, if I, that's just top of my head right now. 600, yes, 600.
Tomorrow night is the CIP meeting. Tomorrow night, Central Arizona Project is hosting its annual East Valley Dinner for customers out in the East Valley. And perhaps they'll have something definitive, doubtful. But I, we did hear through the grapevine that sidebar discussions are happening between the upper and lower basin executives. So we're hoping that somebody can come to an agreement and give us some solid numbers on what to expect.
Joe and I are going to attend that meeting tomorrow night and we'll have a report. Are you going to go, Sean? Good, okay.
Just in closing, you'd asked earlier if there was any council direction. We, we think one of the purposes of today's meeting was to give you a comprehensive strategy. The council as a whole has not really seen our short term, midterm and long term strategies other than some of these big projects like the Phoenix Interconnect. We also brought like a wheeling agreement recently. We're going to be bringing some other like water exchange agreements to the council. So it's very important for you to see today how all these pieces fit together and the big picture of what we're trying to do. And, and as the mayor said, we couldn't really do this without the help of the team that we have here. So we really appreciate it. We also got the message loud and clear about the rates. And when you get, when we are working on the rate analysis this summer, we'll try to make sure that we're not having too much in the way of water acquisition resources built into the rates. Because it's not going to be something that the, the rate payers are going to be able to sustain. So you will see that when it comes back this fall for you guys to consider the rate adjustments that are going to be over the next five years. So unless there's no further questions, we really appreciate your attentiveness today. And we, we think this is really good and you're going to probably see this coming back probably every six months for updates. And then obviously along the way, if there's any water exchange agreements or IGAs or things of that sort. We're very, it's very promising, Phoenix is really, I, I think you got the answer from Sean. But that Phoenix Interconnect has just really opened doors for a lot of different, on a lot of different levels. Plus the discussions we're able to have with them on a variety of different water resources. So I think this is all very exciting. And yes, it was probably the most expensive project in the town's history. But I think it's starting to pay dividends, not only now, but into the future.
I think it's the second most looked at construction project next to the Bumblebee robot thing.
I think you're right.
We should paint it yellow and black.
I wrote myself a note, so I wouldn't forget, in Cave Creek, 5,500 residents. What I'm hoping as we go forward is we can have some workshop discussion about if any of the water companies have water and if anybody wants to look at purchasing the water company or companies here in Cave Creek. We bought the water company for 19 million and took $2 million debt on something that was appraised originally for $5 million. The town have spent between a quarter of a billion or a third of a billion, depending upon the numbers that you take a look at. So I'm not a water expert and I'm not speaking against the proposals here on the table. But for 5,500 people, we have a history of spending money. And then later, having a difficult time to explain why we made these purchases, why we made these decisions. So as we go forward, now that we're down to two options for future water, I had heard, I thought, that there might be some potential wet water available. The attorney is saying, no, if that's not the case, then it's completely discounted. But if there's anything else, either with Carefree or other options, it would be great to have some time to take a look at that.
I think the commercial companies provide an economy of scale. So it's something we ought to take a look at, that, that we just can't do. I mean, Phoenix as a large water company, Scottsdale's got a large water company. You know, there's five or six cities here that have really big water companies. They can do a project for, you know, two thirds of what we can do. We're also at the end of nowhere, so we get to pay the 20% Cave Creek discount just because where we sit. So I, I do think we ought to take a look at everything. You have other comments? Our business included, many is adjourned.